Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco Council's Special Meeting and Regular Workshop. The council thanks you for being part of our city government. At special meetings, the council takes formal actions on specific items and during the workshops, only discusses issues with no formal actions taken. Given the recent dramatic rise in COVID case rates within the community, and due to the size of our council chambers and number of attendees, masks will be required for all attending the meeting, in person, vaccinated or not. Agenda packets are available at the city's Pasco website at www.pasco-wa.gov/agenda. Please note that the city council's special meetings and workshops may be accessed through GoToWebinar. This meeting is also being televised live on Pasco TV, Channel 191, on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, and YouTube channel. This and previous council meeting video is available on the city's website. And lastly, the public may submit their comments and/or questions by contacting the city manager or city clerk or using the feedback form on the city's website. So with housekeeping out of the way, just wanted to, again, welcome everyone and maybe we have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Alvarado. Councilmember Maloney.
Did you see Alvarado?
Yes.
He was on.
Yes.
Okay. We can't hear you right now, Councilmember Alvarado. Are you muted? Give us one second. How's that? Councilmember Alvarado can... Well, we see him here, so let me go ahead and move forward.
Councilmember Maloney.
What? Just give us one second, Councilmember Maloney. We can just slightly hear you. We might have a volume issue. Just hold on just for one second. You want to try it again, Councilmember Maloney? Just maybe say "test." I can hear you, but just slightly. Give us one second. We're having technical difficulties with the sound. Just give us one moment, please. You can hear me okay, councilmembers? Give me a thumbs up if you can hear me? Okay? So it's just that way coming in. Mr. Maloney, you want to give us a test?
Can you hear me, Mr. Mayor?
There we go. We can hear you now. We think we figured out the problem. Good job, whoever did that. Thank you, Mr. Grand Boy.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, it is very difficult and echoing to hear you. I'm having trouble making any of the words you're saying.
Let me see if maybe getting closer to the mic, does that help?
It's still really echoing.
Is it the mask?
No.
Okay. How about now? Testing? I don't think I have anything on. Is your off? Give us one moment. There you go.
I shouldn't have rolled out here.
Okay.
That's both in council chambers and other council members.
I can hear you guys well now. Can you hear me okay?
It sounds better. It's a little echoing in the headlights, a little electronic. I don't think it's just my connection. I can hear Councilmember Alvarado just fine.
Okay. How about...
Can you hear me?
Sorry about that. Testing, testing.
Now it says we're missing a microphone. Send speakers.
Do we... Should we try restarting everything? If that's the case, then maybe we can do a... Okay. So can you hear me at all, Councilmember Milne? Okay. Then I guess I can work on texting them and letting them know that we'll take a five-minute recess and to see if we can reboot it. Okay, thank you. Mr. Attke, does that mean that they all have to go out and then come back in?
...
We got people on here. Can folks in the audience hear us?
Milne's back on her eight.
Okay.
Let's check him.
Councilmember Milne, can you hear us? Okay, we can hear you. Is the sound okay?
Councilwoman Milne, so can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Councilmember Maloney, can you hear me now? Still not very good? Can you hear me now? Councilmember Milne, can you hear me? Director Warley can hear us. They're all self-muted? Interesting. Director Warley, can you hear us?
You can't.
Nope. Testing, testing. Unable to share webcam. Well... Okay. Can you hear me now? Okay, looks like we might have it. Okay. Testing, can everybody hear me now? Okay, we got a thumbs up, thumbs up. Councilmember Serrano? Okay, and Councilwoman Roach?
I can hear you.
Oh, wonderful. Okay, please don't touch anything. And Councilmember Alvarado, are you on? Councilmember Alvarado? Yeah, go ahead and text him. So with that... Oh, he is. Okay, so Councilmember Alvarado is on his way here, being that he's a short distance. We are now back into our meeting at 7:21. And we left off with the housekeeping issue. Why don't we continue with the roll call, please?
So we know Councilmember Alvarado and Maloney. Councilmember Milne.
Can you hear?
Councilmember Roach.
Present.
Councilmember Serrano.
Present.
Mayor Protem Barajas.
Present.
And Mayor Martinez.
Present. Maybe I'll rise for the flag salute, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. And next on the agenda, we go to new business. And tonight, we have a resolution, the American Rescue Plan Act Fund for Utility Assistance Program, in agreement with Basin Disposal, Inc. Director Richa?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. This resolution should be very familiar to all of us. We have done almost exactly the same kind of program for our electric, water, sewer, ambulance services, for services that are provided by City of Pasco and Franklin PUD. And what is in front of you today, council, is basically the same premise for services provided by Basin Disposal, Inc. We are requesting $110,000 at this time, and the logic of that being looking at the delinquencies, working with Ms. Pransik at Basin Disposal, Inc., and looking at their delinquencies and estimating how much of that might be pandemic-related delinquencies. Just like with the other programs that council has approved, if this is not sufficient funds to assist our residents, we will come back to council at a later date. And with that, I'm here for any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Director Richa. So councilmen, councilmembers, you have any questions or comments for Director Richa? Well, I personally am happy to see that more assistance will be heading out towards our community members that have been struggling to make ends meet. And I'm confident that, you know, the process that we have in place will be for those who qualify, those who actually need assistance. So I'm in favor of this resolution. So with that, if there's no other questions or comments by council, Mayor Protem Barajas.
Absolutely, Mayor. I move to approve Resolution Number 4085, approving an agreement with the Basin Disposal Incorporated of Franklin County for the Utility Assistance Program with American Rescue Plan Act Funds.
Okay, there's been a motion to approve Resolution Number 4085. Do I hear a second?
Serrano will second it.
Seconded by Councilmember Serrano. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Passes unanimously. All right.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to give you an update on some of the other utility programs as well, if that's okay with you.
Okay, we can do that.
So right now, we have about 604 applications, 644 applications that we've processed between Franklin PUD and City of Pasco. And we've processed over $244,000 in utility assistance so far. I would like to say that we still haven't reached to all of our customers yet. We're still working through that process. So this is a really good start for the program. And there is about 300 applications that are in queue right now that are not included in this number. So overall, we're doing a good job at reaching out to our customers who are in need and helping them with the delinquencies.
Thank you. Thank you for that information, Director Richa. Just one other quick question. For the utility assistance as well, there's going to be a credit for the other members. Is that something that they have to apply for as well?
Yes, they do have to apply for it. Given that BDI is a private entity, we did not include that within this program. But for PUD and for the City of Pasco, we do have the credit. And we have seen a lot of our families come in to pay their bills or contact us about their difficulty paying their bills. And they are current. So if we had not included that component, they would not have benefited from this program. So they are receiving credits for their future utility bills.
All right, thank you for that. Any other questions or comments from council? Thank you for that report. So with that, we are going to adjourn the special meeting and we'll move on to our workshop meeting. So with... We'll call the meeting to order on the workshop meeting. And we have housekeeping out of the way. And we'll go to verbal reports from council members. Is there any council members that would like to report anything from last week? I know we were all very busy on one night. Anybody want to start that off? Mayor Protem?
I'll start it off. I just wanted to say thank you to Police Department Chief Roski and all the area resource officers, deputy chief, everyone out there. There was five community or neighborhood block parties for National Night Out. Everything that I saw was safe, social distancing. And mostly, it was just the neighbors coming out and joining, meeting each other, and meeting the officers involved. And it was great neighborhood, community participation. Fire department was out over at Terravita with their CPR mannequins. Is that what you call it? That was a new item out at the parties, and so everyone was trying to participate. Want to report that my mannequin survived with an 88 percent. So he's alive. But wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Barajas. This is a... I will recognize that Councilmember Alvarado just stepped in. Do you have anything, any verbal reports you'd like to... I know that last week, Councilmember Alvarado and Gracey Jamal had a big part in their neighborhood block over at Terravita. And what a party that was. It was well-attended, had a great time. Anything you want to share on that?
No, I mean, it was a really good time. We do this every year, and last year we couldn't. So this year, we wanted to do it up a little bit more. So it was good to meet together and just bring the community together again. Also wanted to report, I attended... I sit on the... I chair one of the committees for Franklin Transit. And so we got a pretty good presentation about how they go through their choosing of different vendors. They have quite a bit of a process. And so it was really good to get an in-depth just understanding of how they choose their different vendors for different contracting. And so it was just really, really good to see from the level... From the low level all the way to the big contracts. So just a really good education, just a lot of due diligence happens.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvarado. And once again, thank you, Chief Roski and all the staff for everything that they put together last week. It was just great to see the communities come together. One of the outfits out there, by Burden, they... Or Sanford, I'm sorry. They had water slides, I mean, they had hot dogs, hamburgers. It was a great... It, it was, it was a great event, and many of them had, all of them had food and, uh, just really enjoyed in seeing the community come together and, uh, making sure everybody's safe. So thank you once again. All right, we'll move right along for items.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes, Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you, I, I just wanted to speak on an item I attended today, um, so I'll undoubtedly forget by next week. Um, but we were invited to speak to the, um, the Regional Chamber and their, um, legislative, um, one of their legislative committees, one of their engage, local engagement committees. And it, the topic was, was largely on the, um, the My Try Twenty Thirty effort and how we can help as a region fund some of these projects. So we had a great opportunity to talk about the, uh, the, the aquatic facility that the City of Pasco is looking, moving forward with through our public facility district. And so we had a conversation about what that looks like and such. Um, and it was, it was great to see that it was, it was very high up on their priority list on a number of their different surveys, uh, community engagement forums, uh, interviews and such. This is a, a very big topic for a lot of people in, in the tri-cities. It was great to see that, that Regional Chamber is, is, is seconding that idea that this is something that's really important to our community. So, um, well, obviously, we couldn't solve all the issues on how you fund regional facilities. Um, certainly it sounded like, um, their efforts coincide with what, you know, with the direction we're moving in Pasco for a, um, you know, aquatic facility that will be regional in nature due to the size of it. So that was good news, and I think it was a great conversation, and I'm sure there'll be more to come.
Mr. Maloney, thank you for attending that meeting. It's very important that we have, uh, one of our council representatives on that. And I know it was an important meeting, so thank you very much for attending that. I know, uh, City Manager Dave Zabel was there as well. Anybody else?
Yes, thank you.
If not, then we'll move right on for the first item of discussion tonight, is the update on the police reform legislation, impacts on Pasco Police and Fire Departments. Mr. Ken Roski, how you doing today?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, uh, members of the public. As you're aware, the legisla-, legislature this year, um, passed several bills, thirteen altogether, with several of those having significant impact on law enforcement, thirteen bills altogether. Although law enforcement is, uh, accustomed to change and new rules by the legislature coming out, we haven't seen an onslaught of thirteen. Um, but, but we've worked closely with, uh, our members, uh, and our, uh, uh, legal staff to work through those. Much of the legislation that was passed, um, we already comply with. Uh, when you look at our, uh, national and state accreditation process and the programs that we have implemented over the last oh, five, ten, and even twenty years to continue moving the Police Department forward. Some of those, uh, mandates are going to be body-worn cameras or the ability to record interviews. We're going to accomplish that with our body-worn cameras. Uh, chokeholds and, uh, uh, the restraints on those, we've always had chokeholds, um, restrained. They have taken it a little bit further with, um, vaginal neck restraints, but we already gave you a presentation, um, a, about a year ago on, on what that looked like. Um, duty to intervene, officers must intervene if they see, um, other officers, uh, misconduct. Uh, we've had that in our policies. Officers have to be readily identifiable. Every one of our officers has a uniform, um, with their name easily displayed. Our policies, um, uh, prior to any legislation has already talked about, um, officers identifying themselves when requested and having that easily displayed. So the, the importance of some of these, we have already accomplished. Um, and we've taken this, these, these bills and the analysis and the legal review of those seriously. Each of our officers, uh, eighty, our eighty-two commission staff has gone through over thirteen hours of intense training, uh, with, with, with our legal department and our instructors to, to best understand, uh, the impacts of these. And, and they're not, uh, the, the legislation isn't clear in a lot of circumstances, so we're having to work, um, with legal analysis to make sure we can understand those. Uh, and then our staff, legal staff, our training cadre, has over, has several hundred hours, um, of reviewing and modifying our policies and procedures to make sure that they, uh, they're in compliance with, with what has been put out. Um, I want to rest, uh, I want to make sure everyone is rest assured, uh, Pasco Police Department's going to, um, respond to the, this legislation as legislator intent, um, as best we can interpret those. We're going to respond, we will continue to respond to every call for service. As we go through the slideshow, some of our response might look a little different. It might be delayed, uh, and some of our resources, uh, might be stretched extremely thin as we, uh, comply with this. But unlike what, um, uh, headlines and, and, uh, and chat might be out there, the Pasco Police Department, like most police departments, are going to continue to answer the call. Um, uh, but, but you, as Council, need to know that that might look a little different once we get there in our response. Uh, the Pasco Police Department is not, um, is not opposed to pivoting and changing. If you just look back at our history, um, certainly in the last five years, at the change, uh, the, the ability for us to embrace the, uh, the transparency and accountability, um, advancing community policing, those are all things that this department, um, has done and will continue to do. So with that, um, I think we'll move on to the first bill, um, Bill Ten Fifty Four. I'm going to let our, uh, uh, legal department kind of walk through the legal analysis of these, so Craig?
Absolutely, so, and, um, so one of the, one of the big changes, the three kind of bills that we're going to be discussing tonight, the first, obviously, uh, House Bill Ten Fifty Four, which is specific to police tactics. And, you know, much of this bill is in response to, uh, the George Floyd case that we saw and, and the outcome from that and the fallout from that. Um, but essentially what we see here is, um, some specific, uh, prohibitions with regard to, uh, the types of force that we, uh, can no longer use. Um, there was, at least with regard to that first, uh, item, that first bullet point, the thirty-seven millimeter, some discussion, uh, with the legis-, with the, uh, the legislative drafters, uh, and with the, um, uh, C J T C, uh, the commission that'll be evaluating these, these certification, uh, uh, processes, and also the initial certification of new officers, um, as to whether or not their intent was to really get rid of some of these less lethal options. Um, because given the definition that we were presented with in the, uh, House Bill, it seemed clear to us that that would fall within to the category of a military-type weapon. Um, thankfully, we did get some, some insight and some guidance, uh, from the drafters of that bill, uh, that clearly that's not their intent. Um, we do see throughout the bill, uh, a requirement that, uh, law enforcement continue to use, uh, what we've been calling a de-escalation continuum, um, and use force as a last resort. Well, one of those, uh, along that deal, de-escalation continuum is our use of, of this, uh, less lethal option, uh, in certain circumstances. Uh, and so we wanted to be clear, you know, whether or not the legislature's intent was to foreclose that as an option or not. Um, and at least the drafters of that opinion or of that legislation, uh, have pro- provided a resounding no that the intent here was to not limit those types of, of, uh, less lethal options. So we do, do still have that option available to us. Um, with regard to, and this is a, a big change in the law, um, vehicle pursuits at this point are, I, I don't want to say that, that they're a dead item, but it's going to be a very limited circumstance where we are able to meet the standard that is identified, uh, in the statute. And you can see the bullet points there, that's what we need to show, and this is an all-inclusive showing. So, um, we need to meet every single element in order to actually chase, uh, a suspect. Um, first, obviously, we need to show that we've got probable cause. In other words, that, uh, a crime has been committed and the, the individual that we are following is, is the person who committed that crime. We need to have, at least for a DUI-type case, not probable cause. Just given the reality of those cases, it's, it, it would be an unusual circumstance that we would have probable cause for a DUI prior to a stop. So for DUI offenses, that standard is lowered to a reasonable suspicion. So we need to have, uh, one of those first two items, either probable cause that the individual is a violent offender or a sex offender, or reasonable suspicion that the individual is DUI. Uh, and then together with that, we need to be able to show that the pursuit of that individual is, is necessary, either to apprehend that individual or to identify who that individual is, which is a further limiting circumstance. So, um, in this scenario, if we had seen an individual who was, uh, maybe we have a reasonable suspicion standard for DUI, but for instance, we are able to identify that individual, and in other words, we know who they are. And there, we can't show that we, we have an absolute need to apprehend that individual. I think that could change, obviously, if the individual's swerving all along the roadway, then obviously the apprehension is necessary because they present a safety risk to the public. Um, but if, if we can't meet that showing, then we cannot engage in a vehicular pursuit. Um, and that third part kind of ties with this fourth part. Again, the person poses an imminent threat to the safety of others. And really what we're looking at here is, is it more dangerous to the public to pursue this individual than it would be to not pursue the individual? And so this is going to be a very fact-intensive inquiry, um, for each one of these encounters that, or calls that a law enforcement officer is going on. Um, no two circumstances are really going to be the same. Uh, you know, you could, I think in most cases, make an argument that by pursuing an individual, if that individual's response is to step on the gas, then in almost all scenarios, that's going to be a more dangerous situation for the public. Um, so again, a limiting factor that really kind of ties law enforcement hands with regard to a vehicular pursuit. Uh, and then finally, uh, we need to have authorization from a supervisor. Um, my thought is that this is probably going to come from the individual's, uh, uh, sergeant, whoever the sergeant is that's, um, uh, in charge of, of, of that particular patrol unit, um, to make that call. And the reality of this is that, you know, when officers are out, um, you know, en- engaging in their law enforcement functions, these things happen very quickly. So for the officer to be able to meet each and one of these standards, um, you know, in a scenario where they're making those split-second decisions, um, i- is going to be a difficult, uh, scenario to, to fulfill. Um, really, the, probably a lot of these things, a lot of these inquiries are going to be happening concurrent with one another, um, such that, you know, that authorization from that supervisor, it may be possible or necessary to make that request, um, prior to meeting every one of these bullet points. So in the event that we are able to make that showing, that authorization's present. But again, that authorization's also contingent on that officer's being able to show these things. So, um, you know, it presents kind of an interesting problem, uh, for our law enforcement officers when it comes to these vehicular pursuits. Um, and we're going to probably see some scenarios where, you know, the public was hoping that law enforcement could have pursued, but due to the new legislation, you know, we're not going to be able to do that unless we can show that standard. And so, you know, this is going to require, and part of the reason why we're providing this presentation tonight isn't just for the benefit of Council, but also for the benefit of the public so that they're aware of what these legal changes mean for their police departments. Um, and one of the big changes is that, uh, you know, the, the police departments are going to be engaging in less vehicular pursuits.
Yes, sir, thank you very much, I just have a quick question.
Sure.
So these are, uh, quite a few items that need to be, uh, be considered when something's going to happen, when there's going to be a pursuit or whatnot. What is the liability, is there a liability for the city? If, if one of these bullets are not absolute sure and then there's not a pursuit, uh, is there a liability for not, for not, um, taking the action, action?
I, you, no, I wouldn't say that there's a legal liability. If we, if we're going through this, uh, framework that we have here, again, either PC or, or in, in instance of DUI, reasonable suspicion, plus the pursuit is necessary for identifying or apprehending, the person poses an imminent threat to safety of others, and we have that authorization. If, if there's one of those things that we're missing, um, and, and in line with that, uh, legal change, we make the determination not to pursue, which is the correct determination to make. Um, there's, there should not be any liability for, uh, our PD for doing that. Now, I think where, where we're going to run into some issues is from the public because the public's going to want to know, well, why wasn't that individual pursued? Um, and the best answer that we can provide the public at this point is because the legislation has changed. You know, the, the, it, it has tied the PD's hands with regard to which cases, uh, or which criminals we can pursue in this scenario. And it's really limited to those cases where we have a violent offender or a sex offender, and we're able to tick these other boxes, or in the limited scenario that we have a DUI suspect and we're able to tick those boxes. Those are really kind of the, the narrow region where we can engage in those vehicular pursuits. But again, um, I think it's going to be the exception and not the rule when we are engaging in a pursuit. I think their general, the general rule that I'm taking away from this is that vehicular pursuits are not going to occur. We're, we're going to have situations where we are able to meet this standard, but I think it's going to be, um, a, a relatively unusual circumstance.
I guess I was just getting at the, you know, on the DUI offense, if it was decided not to pursue and he goes down the road and kills somebody.
Right.
Um, you know, those things are really difficult. Um, just want, that's the reason I was asking the question.
Right, and it would also get to this idea of like a, um, like an intervening tort feaser or a superseding tort feaser, right? You know, that individual's action to engage, uh, in the crime of driving under the influence, um, and then they, you know, unfortunately, that DUI becomes a vehicular homicide, um, is, is not the PD's responsibility. And at this point, the legislature's made clear that, you know, they do not want police departments pursuing unless we can meet this standard. So, um, you know, obviously, I would encourage, you know, members of the public that, um, you know, if there's concerns, obviously, the PD would, would like to hear those concerns. Um, and ultimately, those are concerns that, um, you know, need to be lodged with our state representative.
Thank you.
So I, I do have a question, um, Councilman Serrano.
Go, go ahead, Councilmember Serrano.
I guess, I'm hoping that PD will keep stats of all these crimes that could have been, potentially been prevented, uh, because my concern is if we have an uptick in crime and Pasco goes from the safest, you know, one of the top safest communities to a, a low ranking, you know, we don't want that to reflect poorly on the City of Pasco. And that kind of dovetails into, uh, the question, I know with fire ratings, we receive a break on insurance as individuals, as residents. Um, do we know if this could potential, potentially impact, uh, if crime rates uptick, uh, premiums for insurance, uh, to the residents of the City of Pasco?
I, I have not heard of that statistic or of insurance companies doing that. Um, to, to your question of are we tracking these? Yes, we are looking at these, each of these events that we are having a altered response to or a reduced response and, and documenting those. And we're working in the joint, uh, tri-city bi-pin system to find a way to make sure that all of the tri-city agencies can track these. But specifically here in Pasco, yes, we are doing that.
Thank you, I appreciate that because, you know, this is one of the few ways that, as an after-the-fact approach, uh, we as a council, you as a PD, can represent our, our residents, right? You know, we can't do much of what the legislature, uh, passed already. We, we've tried to attempt to comment and what have you, um, they passed a law notwithstanding. So whatever we can do to bolster an argument, look, if this provides more safety and we find that, great. If it doesn't, then we need to provide that information as well. So I guess my plea is however we can help to convey that information, please make use of us.
And if I may just add a, a bit of clarification, with regard to this authorization, so when we look at the House Bill, um, again, we're looking at, uh, just to make sure that I have the correct House Bill, Ten Fifty Four, under Tactics. If you look at page, um, six, and I'm looking at, uh, section seven, subsection D, uh, little I, it states that, um, the officer, uh, again, the officer seeking authorization and consultation with the supervising officer must consider alternatives to the vehicular pursuit. So this is the calculus and the assessment that that, uh, sergeant is going to be going through. Um, again, uh, in a very fast-paced environment, the supervisor must consider the justification for the vehicular pursuit and other safety considerations, including but not limited to speed. And this gets to the example that I just posed, which is in an instance where the response is to hit the gas. Again, this is a factor that they're going to consider, uh, weather, traffic and road conditions, and the known presence of minors in the vehicle. And the vehicular pursuit must be terminated if any of these requirements of the section are not met. So, you know, these are the things that the o- officers are going to be, uh, thinking about, uh, in making that determination as to whether or not, um, they're going to grant authorization for a pursuit. So if we have a situation where, you know, the individual, let's say we're doing seventy down the- So if we have a situation where, you know, the individual, let's say we're doing seventy down the interstate. Uh, and the weather's inclement and it appears that there's minors in the child, that's gonna be a situation where that authorization clearly is not granted. You know, and that may be the case, notwithstanding that some of these other factors may be met.
All right. Did that answer your question, Councilmember Serrano?
Yeah, that that helps. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Temporoz.
Yes, real quick. Um, this is in regards to pursuit and I'm not sure if I should direct my question to you or Chief. Um, just a speeder. Are you following them to stop them, pull them over?
Yeah.
How does this?
Yeah, we'll continue to follow them when it uh becomes dangerous and reckless, the driving. Where it's obvious the person is not stopping, it's now moving into a a an eluding case and a pursuit, we'll, we will not continue that any further.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we can keep going there.
Next, next slide, I think.
Yes. So again, under uh, so this is our House bill, um, thirteen ten, our use of force. Um, and I would agree that this is probably the most significant bill that we had um come down the pipe this year. In terms of, you know, its effect on uh law enforcement's, um, you know, policing capability. Uh, and really, you know, what we see here, um, I'm gonna talk a little bit about, you know, historically, this case called Terry v. Ohio, which. Kind of changed the landscape of, you know, when an officer can um apply force in situations where they're armed with less than probable cause. Um, you know, Terry v. Ohio was a case that uh came out of, obviously, the state of Ohio, I believe, is Cleveland. As where the individual was, um, individual suspect was being surveilled by uh detectives of the Cleveland uh Police Department. Um, it became apparent to them that that individual was uh casing the outside of of stores, him and uh and a couple other individuals. Um, in a concerted effort to rob the store, uh, at least in the view of this detective, which roused his suspicion. Um, the detective went to uh contact uh Mr. Terry. And at some point during that encounter, um, it became apparent to that law enforcement officer, uh. They began to struggle with one another that Mr. Terry was um armed. Um, and he had engaged in a pat down of his outer clothing uh to determine that uh Mr. Terry in fact did have a weapon on his person. Um, and then at that point went into his pocket to seize that firearm. Uh, and so the issue in that case was, you know, whether it is always unreasonable for a policeman to seize a person. And subject him to a limited search for weapons unless there's probable cause uh for an arrest. And the court essentially came down and said, uh, you know, it's not always unreasonable to do so. Um, in those instances where that officer has a reasonable and articulable suspicion that that individual is. Uh, both armed and dangerous and presents a threat or a risk to law enforcement or the public. That that law enforcement officer is justified in engaging in a brief investigatory detention to dispel. His concerns about officer's safety and public safety. Again, that search is limited to the outer clothing. And it's limited to its scope in 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 order to dispel that the officer's concerns. So really. We have this use of force and I know there's a disagreement uh amongst attorneys throughout the state as to whether or not Terry has been affected. I would say. Terryville, Ohio is still good law at the federal level. Um, however, in Washington. Um, you know, the legislators want to step further and said, you know, we do not want officers to apply force. Certainly, the actions that the officer engaged in, you know, an outer pat of the clothing of Mr. Terry is use of force. And the court was clear that that was a seizure and a search. Um, so those types of actions uh are not going to occur. Um, we're we're not going to see, you know, those kind of brief investig- investigative detentions uh in the form of a seizure. Uh, what we may see are continued uh consensual encounters, right? So that investigative detention. Which, again, the idea that the individual's not free to leave, that they're compelled to stay and answer questions, uh, is gone. Uh, the notion now is that um those investigative uh encounters will be consensual in nature. In other words, if the individual. Feels inclined to leave and walk away, they're free to do so. Um, cuz this uh use of force uh bill has circumscribed, you know, when officers can't apply physical force. To very narrow circumstances, either the officer is armed with probable cause uh to make an arrest. And then the other two kind of tie in with one another. Um, the officer is using that force to prevent an escape or. The officer uh is using that force to affect an arrest. Those are all related to probable cause. So either we have probable cause and in that uh scenario, we can uh employ force. Again. It's only that force which is necessary to address the threat. Um, so in a run of the mill. Uh, you know, let's say probable cause for uh, you know, theft in the third degree, right? That's. A relatively minor uh crime. So the level of force, again, in that kind of scenario is gonna be limited to that. Which is required to put the individual in handcuffs. Now, that's a sliding scale depending on how that. Uh, individual suspect may um react or behave in the presence of law enforcement. Um, but we need to show that, that we have that probable cause before we go uh hands on with an individual. And um with regard to this imminency requirement, again. The legislature is not saying that we can't defend ourselves or defend the public. It's saying if we're going to apply force, we need to be able to, if if it's not in a context of probable. Cause to make an arrest, we need to be able to show that that person presents an uh imminent threat either to themselves, the law enforcement officer. Or the public. Uh, and in those scenarios, we can apply uh physical force. Up to and including deadly force, again, if it's that which is necessary to address the threat. With the exception of deadly force being applied to oneself, right? We don't apply deadly force in a suicide scenario. Um, this raises kind of interesting concerns about these non criminal. Non-force calls that law enforcement is called out on, for instance, a suicide call. Um, you know, given the nature of those types of calls, uh, obviously, that individual in most circumstances. Is going to present an imminent threat to themselves. Um, a good example of this is the individual who is. Threatening suicide and is on a bridge and ready to jump off the bridge, right? Um, that's a clear scenario where if law enforcement arrives on scene and that individual's on that bridge ready to jump. If we were to handcuff that individual to the bridge or grab them to keep them from jumping, that's a reasonable exercise of force under this new law. Um, as opposed to a situation where we respond to a suicide call. And maybe it's not as clear that that individual does present an imminent threat. Maybe it was really a call for someone to listen or a call for help. Unless a call or a threat to their own life. You know, these are the calculations that the law enforcement officer is going to have to engage in when they initially arrive on scene to. Triage and determine whether or not that imminency requirement is met. Now, those calls can also become dangerous, right? The person who's suicidal could um turn their intent towards law enforcement. And this is really where things get. I think, you know, more difficult for law enforcement because one of the de-escalation measures that we're required to employ. Uh, when we're looking at this continuum as to whether or not force should be used, is this idea that. Um, if no crime has been committed, law enforcement should consider leaving the scene. Um, and so it 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 presents kind of an interesting uh problem for law enforcement to try to solve in the field, which is. If we have a situation like that where, um, you know, an individual, we we respond to a suicide call, individual hasn't committed a crime. And it appears that, you know, that individual tends is tending to, um, you know, then. You know, pose some of those threats to law enforcement. It it raises the question whether law enforcement should continue to stay there or should leave the scene. Um, and and there's no real good answer at this point. Uh, but, you know, it again, each each case is gonna be fact intensive. Um, no two cases are really gonna be the same under this standard. Uh. So we look at, again, Terry is is, you know, at least based on this this legal change here in Washington State. I think Terry is 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 kind of dead letter in Washington. Um, again. We're not going to have a investigative seizure or detention. We're going to have an investigative encounter. Um, you know, and we'll have to see whether or not our AG office uh comes out with some clarification on. You know, whether or not Terry v. Ohio is still an acceptable standard in Washington, but based on what we're seeing in House Bill thirteen ten, it seems pretty clear to us that. You know, this idea that we can apply physical force in circumstances where we have a reasonable suspicion, which is. Something more than a hunch, right? It's something that, uh, you know, a reasonable officer under the circumstances would have a reasonable belief that. Some criminal action is afoot, as opposed to a probable cause standard, which is higher. Um, you know, uh. Pre-Terry, everything was premised on the idea of, uh. You know, if a officer is going to make a warrantless arrest, they need to be armed with probable cause. The same probable cause. That would be used to support a judge's granting of that warrant. So this is where we're at now again. We're kind of back to pre-Terry where. If we are going to use force uh in a situation like this, we need to be able to show that that's tied to probable cause. The same probable cause that would that would uh justify a judge issuing a warrant to arrest that individual.
I I think it's important to understand the um higher bar that probable cause represents versus. Reasonable suspicion. I think it's important to understand that in nineteen sixty-eight. Officer's safety was um important to the Supreme Court and allowing um a brief detention. And a and and a search uh for weapons for officer's safety. And I think it's important to also know that. Um, officers have never been able to just stop somebody um whenever they wanted to. They've always had to have articulable facts. That a crime has been, is being, or is about to be committed and the person they're um briefly detaining. Is is involved in that crime um with articulable facts. A a example. Um, uh, as as Mr. Briggs was talking about examples, um, council members, uh, one of your spouses might call. Nine one one right now because they have an intruder in their home and they uh and and they report to the radio operator. The nine one one operator that they give a brief description, a male, white male in a red shirt. Uh, ran out the or busted out the window and left. First officer um arrives in the area. And sees a sees a white male uh walking down the street, only white male in the area. Um, matches the description, but it's, it doesn't rise to probable cause. Um, so the officer has articulable facts that a crime that he matches the the description. Prior, in any other state and prior to July twenty-fifth, an officer could briefly detain this person. In this state, we can ask that person to stop. The officer would get out and say, would you please stop and talk to me? Um, if he doesn't stop, the officer cannot pursue him because he doesn't have probable cause yet. He has to wait until he gets probable cause. Either from another officer or he has to go um to your house, talk to your spouse and determine that. Um, yes, this guy was involved in that and then he's gonna have to follow, follow up. There's been some that suggested. Well, the officer should just follow, um, get into uh in in until they get the probable cause, keep chasing him, running after them. Um, we we will not train our officers to do that. Again, your officers and the safety of them is is extremely important to us. And we wouldn't allow officers to just chase after somebody and decide who's got the better um marathon skills. Um, is the subject setting the officer up for an ambush? Those are tactics that we would never train an officer. We want to stop and seize that. That that per- that that person as quickly as possible for both the officer and the subject's safety. So I think it it's important to just kind of understand in perspective in real life, um, with the heightened difference between reasonable suspicion, probable cause. Reasonable suspicion, um, we've, officers have never been able to just willy nilly stop anybody they wanted on the streets. And I think, um. Uh, uh, that has been misconstrued with this piece of uh legislation, hence the reason they wanted the 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 higher standard. So. Thank you, Mr. Briggs.
Thank you, Chief.
Next slide. Uh, let's see, back up one more. Did, uh, I I guess you did talk about, okay, before we move on to the next one, any other questions, just to try and. Um, okay, next slide. So some some examples of what um our our altered response might look like. And uh welfare checks, medical calls, um, tho- those are all calls we'll continue to go to. But we're going to gather information. Um, the call might be handled by phone. It might be cooperation and coordination with our. Uh, with our fire service personnel to determine what the best response might be for that. Um, traditionally, uh, people have called and wanted law enforcement to conduct a civil standby. Those are gonna be evaluated on case by case basis and may not occur. Uh, it it'll just depend on the circumstances. And again, once an officer goes someplace, he has to be careful that um if a crime, i- if if a crime's not being committed. What his purpose is there. So we'll we'll look at all of those, um, and 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 the need for us to respond to them. Recognizing that we're gonna answer every call, but just our response uh uh could be could be limited and and will certainly be limited. Uh, in those.
Chief, could you, could you explain civil stand standby, probably folks in the audience don't know what that means?
Sure. So, um, you and your spouse had a disagreement the night before. Uh, and you're one of the other parties left and now they want to go back and gather some personal items. Um, so they might call a police officer to come and keep the peace. So we're gonna have to evaluate each of those type of calls. And if the officer's going to go back and uh and and do a what's called a civil standby in those. Um, and and depending on the uh uh the new laws, what the immediate threat is. And um a- and what our purpose would be there. So, does that help? Um. So I think, I think this is, uh, uh, be- before we, uh, let me move my slide back here. Okay, next slide. So before we get into the uh, to the Blake decision, uh, one of the uh, one of the things that. Yes, go ahead.
Sorry, it's Councilman Serrano again. Uh, can you talk about what we're really seeing statistically happen or will happen? I mean, I can't believe that this would actually be a true reduction in crime, but seemingly a reduction in. Stopping or reporting crime, or am I just swinging at the wind here?
No, 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 uh, you, I think it's too early for us to certainly see for sure what the crime trend, what the crime rate's going to turn out to be. But we certainly are concerned about the crime trend that we're seeing now. For example, we have a uh drastic reduction in our part two crimes. Uh, part two crimes, uh, if you'll remember, are those um, uh, misdemeanor type of crimes. The crimes of of shoplift, trespass, tho- those kind of offenses. Um, crimes of disorder and rule um in an in 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 a society. We're seeing a a drastic reduction of those because the officers aren't able to go out and make those stops. And are restricted in how they're able to get people to comply with them. Um, a reduction in part two crime isn't always a good thing. Uh, it it translates into law enforcement maybe being tired up or not being able to do other things. Um, and and to the contrary, when I reported to the city manager and council in the past, sometimes when we see um an increase in part two crimes. That's, that's a good thing. Uh, we're out doing proactive work. We're getting in front of uh of people. Um, while they're committing lesser offenses before they can commit the larger offenses. So we are already seeing. A a a drastic decrease in our part two crimes. And I think it's too early right now to report and see what the overall crime rate certainly for part one crimes is gonna be.
Thanks for that clarification.
All right, I'll take a stab at uh the Blake decision. Um, that's the decision that. Um, the Supreme Court in February uh made simple possession of controlled substance. Um, no longer a crime. So the state, in in this state. Um, possession of a person with any kind of drug, whether that's heroin, cocaine, fentanyl. Um, law enforcement, when they contact those individuals, is forced to give them a referral. They have to give them two referrals, in fact, um, before they're able to consider physically arresting them. So, um, an officer in Pasco makes contact with a subject and gives them his second referral. He wouldn't know that he had already had, the individual had two referrals in Yakima or Spokane. Or Grant County. Uh, there is no coordinated database for that. So the officers are simply going to give them. A uh a referral form and uh and and send them on their way. The person sitting there. Um, with their methamphetamine or their extremely dangerous fentanyl, I've reported to you on uh on the extreme dangers of fentanyl. or their extremely dangerous fentanyl, I've reported to you on, uh, on the extreme dangers of fentanyl, will get a piece of paper with a referral. However, the person with an open container of alcohol would get a ticket from, from the officer. It, it doesn't seem to make, doesn't seem to make much sense. I think the real concern that, that we have, besides the fact that we know that the majority of, of crimes, um, uh, uh, criminologists report that over eighty percent of all crimes, um, translate back to drugs of some sort. Somehow drugs are involved in, in virtually all, all, all of the crimes. So if we can't impact those at the lowest level and user and give opportunities for them to get help, get substance help, um, I, I, I'm not sure how we're going to impact that. Today, what happens, or, or prior to the Blake decision, what would happen is we would end up, uh, uh, making an arrest. It would then have the justice system that would be able to force those individuals into treatment. Um, and sometimes it takes several arrests to get them to take, to take us up on our opportunities or up on opportunities to, 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 to get themselves free of substance, substance abuse. It's a serious, serious, um, a drug addiction and something that a society certainly needs to, uh, look at and find alternatives. Making it, uh, uh, free for people to have whenever they want is, is concerning to law enforcement and what that's gonna look like, not only from a compassionate standpoint, we try and help people, but also to the end of, of, of crime in general. Um, so, to just finish that, to just finish that off real quick, the third violation, the officer could make an arrest. The prosecutor is then encouraged to not charge and to, and to defer those as well. The, the arrest that the officer would make on the third offense is just a simple misdemeanor, no longer a felony. So it would equate to fentanyl, extremely dangerous drug, uh, would be very, very similar to, uh, driving, uh, with a suspended driver's license or, um, maybe a disorderly conduct. So just to kind of give you some context of, of where, where a misdemeanor lies in the, uh, in the realm of the, of, of the criminal justice system.
You for asking.
Sir.
We got a question, Councilmember Al Rado.
Yes.
A couple of clarifying questions, uh, thank you for this information. Uh, I remember, uh, this is something I, I testified, uh, about, uh, from the city of Pasco, so it's certainly something I have a little bit of knowledge of. But, uh, one of the things I was confused about was about the, uh, is there a limit to, um, the amount of these substances?
Yes, it's, it, so if you are at a, a larger quantity of a dealer, uh, those would still be at a felony. It's gonna be the lower personal use, just somebody with a small amount of, 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 of the drug, of methamphetamine or something.
After a certain amount, it, 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 it con- would constitute more of an intent to distribute.
Correct, correct.
And then, uh, the second, uh, uh, question I had is, uh, I know that there's, um, coordinate, there's not coordinated between Yakima and Spokane, but do we have a database internally ourselves to keep track of, uh, various officers who have had interactions?
W- we do, yes.
All right, thank you.
Other questions on the Blake decision?
Well, I, I don't, I don't know much about, about these type of drugs and, and the, uh, and the quantities, but it, do you see, foresee, uh, i- if the, whatever the minimum is or the maximum is that you could carry without being arrested? Uh, does it, it, would it be still lucrative for those dealers to just be making a lot of trips in town?
There, yeah, I, I-
We're trying to avoid from, you know, having people do, you know, deal this stuff here in, in our city.
Sure, it, 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 it could be. I suspect they're not, they're, they're more about efficiencies and how they can transport that as quickly as possible. For, for us, it really is, um, about those low-level users, the crime that follows them, and the crime on the rest of society, and the fact that we're not gonna be able to get them any help. Um, and this is going to, we're, we're, we're just going to not be able to get, um, people that have serious addictions the help they need. They're just gonna continue to be victimized themselves by the drug and then continue to victimize society, um, wi- wi- with criminal acts that continue and go along with it.
Thank you, Chief. All right.
N- next slide? Next slide? Uh, one, one more. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Briggs?
Yeah, so, yeah, I just briefly had a-
You're speaker, sir? Thank you.
I'll learn. Uh, so I'm just gonna briefly discuss the, uh, decertification bill. This is one, obviously, one of the more, uh, important, crucial bills for, you know, law enforcement personnel to actually understand and internalize, uh, 'cause this is, you know, what would get them, uh, to lose that, that ability to, uh, become, or to continue to be a law enforcement officer in Washington State or, um, you know, the loss outright during their application process. Uh, you know, I just wanna talk just kind of briefly about, um, decertification. Then we're gonna get into a little bit more detail about, uh, mandatory decert, discretionary decert, uh, the decertification hearings, and then, uh, the appeals process. But, so, when we look, um, at the bill and kind of, you know, in reviewing this, I was trying to figure out, well, has the legislature, did they define, you know, what, uh, certification is? Uh, and unfortunately, they did not do that. Um, but what we can glean, uh, from, uh, the language of, uh, House Bill fifty-fifty-one is that certification is, uh, as follows. It's the process by which the, uh, law enforcement agency, uh, the commission, and I would add to that, the applicant, uh, uh, for peace officer candidacy, it, uh, determines that that individual is, uh, physically, mentally, and morally fit or quote-unquote suitable to serve as a peace officer in Washington State. Uh, certification is also a condition precedent to a law enforcement, uh, officer agency offering a non-conditional offer of employment. So it's not until the point at which, uh, a recruit, um, becomes certified that, uh, the city of Pasco would be able to extend an unconditional offer of employment to that individual. Um, and it's also the process, uh, i- i- in terms of decertification that, um, an existing law enforcement officer could find themselves in that hearing if they, uh, engage in a misstep. Um, so when we look at the, let me scroll through my outline here real quick. We look at the mandatory, uh, and first off, so when we're, when we're discussing these, uh, these, there's decertification hearings, it's important for, um, council to be aware, for the public to be aware. Uh, the standard that we were operating under, um, prior to this, uh, new legislation was a, uh, clear convincing and cogent evidence standard, which is an administrative standard. Um, it lies somewhere between, uh, our preponderance standard, which is what we've shifted to, and, uh, beyond a reasonable doubt, which is what, obviously, what we see in the, in the criminal courts. Um, so we went to a relatively exacting standard to a, uh, civil liability standard. Um, fifty-one percent or more, uh, or more likely than not standard, is the standard that we're operating under now. Um, in other words, it'll be easier for, uh, the CJTC to find an individual officer has, um, committed wrongdoing or engaged in unlawful application of force. Um, so we're looking at, uh, those specific, um, hearings. Essentially, the mandatory, uh, certification is going to occur in instances of what I would classify as very serious wrongdoing. So, um, these are gonna be the un- unusual cases, I think, you know? An instance where, uh, again, under forty-three, one-oh-one, one-oh-five, subsection two, uh, the commission must deny or revoke the certification of an applicant or officer if the applicant or officer, uh, has been convicted of a felony offense or a gross misdemeanor offense with a domestic violence tag, uh, or an offense with sexual motivation or other sex offense under nine alpha, uh, point four-four RCW, or a federal out-of-state, uh, uh, comparable offense. Um. Likewise, uh, the, uh, commission may open a, or must open a decertification hearing if, uh, the officer has been, and this is what I get to, so we've got serious crimes, and we've got separation from employment plus. So this is the plus aspect. So if the officer has been terminated by the employing agency or otherwise separated from the employing agency after engaging in or was found by a court to have engaged in the use of force which resulted in death or serious injury, and the use of force violated the law. So, um, that last part's really important. The use of force violated the law. With what law? This law. The law, the legislature just changed. What other law? Our policy. Because our policy has been elevated to the status of law through this new legislative change. So, you know, the one thing, um, that Pasco has, and I think, you know, they're strides ahead of most other agencies throughout the state, is, uh, the city of Pasco PD has been proactive in, um, you know, formulating this policy for, uh, several years now. And many of the things that the PD was doing already are what the legislature is asking us to do now. So, um, most of our police departments are ahead of the game in that, in that regard. Um, and we can always fall back on that policy, um, to say, look, the actions were consistent with that policy, therefore, they don't fit within this rubric that, you know, whatever force was applied was unlawful. Um, likewise, if the, uh, individual officer has been terminated by the employing agency or otherwise separated from the employ, employing agency after witnessing or found by a court to have witnessed another officer's use of excessive force and was in a position to intervene to end the excessive use of force and failed to do so, or, and this is important, failed to report the use of excessive force in accordance with agency policy or law. So that "or" is important because, um, you know, it's presented this example, what about a junior officer? Um, and actually, you see this when you go back and look at the, uh, George Floyd video. There was an officer there that, uh, a couple times, you know, he had his hand out on the leg, was asking, you know, maybe should we get him up, and was saying some things, and he was ignored. Uh, well, apparently, the officer was only on the force for about five days. So if we have a situation where an officer is junior and is in a situation where maybe they feel the need to intervene and they don't intervene, they can always make sure that they're, um, you know, complying with this law by reporting. They can always report. Um, so in the event that an officer wanted to intervene, didn't intervene, they can save themselves under the statute by reporting, because again, the language is they were terminated after witnessing wrongdoing and either failed to intervene or failed to report. So that "or" is important for law enforcement to remember that, you know, in the event that, um, we're on the fence, we're gonna report, and that's going to, um, protect the law enforcement officer and the agency. Now, um, lastly, and this kind of, I, I think goes without saying, i- if an officer cannot carry a firearm, right, that officer is, is, is going to be subject to a decertification mandatory hearing. Um, I think that one's probably not a lot of discussion that needs to go on there, but I would add that, you know, there are, with the advent of the, um, emergency risk protection orders, um, this could be more of an issue. Um, but if we're in a scenario where the individual officer is prohibited from, uh, uh, possessing a firearm either by court order or law, um, that individual is going to find themselves in a decertification hearing. Now, with regard to the, you know, permissive cases where the, uh, commission may open a decertification hearing, uh, again, much broader spectrum of conduct that's captured here. These are, um, the less serious cases, uh, when the commission may, but they may not, uh, choose to open up a hearing. So if the officer failed to timely meet all requirements for obtaining a certification, obviously, the commission can open up a hearing into that. If, uh, it was previ- if the certification was previously issued through administrative error, in other words, the commission screwed up. So if the commission screws up and issues a certification, they can open up a decertification hearing to, uh, correct their wrongdoing. Um, if the individual, uh, knowingly falsified or omitted material, um, during the certification process, if the officer lied during that process, right, then they can open up a decertification hearing into, into that issue. Or, and this is kind of related, um, the officer interfered with the investigation or action for denial of revocation by either making a knowingly false statement or failing to timely and accurately report information, uh, required, um, through the commission's investigation process. Or in any matter under review, uh, tampered with, uh, or otherwise destroyed evidence, again, germaine to that, that inquiry, uh, by the commission. Um, likewise, under that subsection three, uh, the commission may open up an investigation, um, into a use of force that could reasonably be expected to cause physical injury and the use of force violated the law or policy of the officer's employer. Again, so if we're looking at this law, that use of force was not necessary to address the threat or that force was not preceded by a determination of probable cause or imminency uh, concerning a threat to the public, the officer, or the individual against which the force is used, or that application of force was inconsistent with our own policy, which is why I've stated earlier that our policy's been elevated to, to the status of law. Um, and specifically with regard to that provision. Um, if we have engaged in a use of force that violated our policy, then it's gonna subject us to a decertification hearing if in the, uh, commission's discretion, it, 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 uh, needs to be opened. Um, and I'll quickly run through the rest. Uh, i- if the officer committed sexual harassment, um, engaged in fraud or misrepresentation, uh, used his position for pers- or her position for personal gain, uh, or engaged in, um, I would say, this is kind of like the, uh, catch-all for attorneys under Rule eight-point-four misconduct. Um, but I'll read it just because I think it's important. Um, if the officer engaged in conduct including but not limited to verbal statements, writings, online posts, recordings, and gestures involving prejudice or discrimination against a person on the basis of race, religion, creed, color, national origin, immigration status, disability, genetic information, marital status, sex, gender, gender identity, gender expression, age, sex orientation, or military and veteran status. So that runs the gambit. So basically, if we're doing anything that would violate our city policies, 'cause we already have policies against discrimination, that's gonna get us into hot water. Um, and we gotta be careful about what we're posting online. So, you know, that's, that's the, you know, dis- discretionary portion. As, as far as the decertification hearings, again, we've discussed briefly that we've moved from a clear convincing and cogent standard to a, um, preponderance of the e- evidence standard, which is more likely than not, fifty-one percent or more. Um, the twenty-one-member panel is appointed by the governor. Um, you know, we've kind of got a presumed balance that's, that's kind of favoring the, I guess, the, the left side of the mountains, uh, philosophical and political viewpoints, uh, in regard to that twenty-one-member panel. I would point out that, um, typically, a quorum, as everyone here is well aware, is a majority of the governing body. So for the city of Pasco with seven council members, a majority is four, uh, to, to conduct business. We have a twenty-one-member panel, appointed by the governor, and a quorum is constituted of nine. So theoretically, we could have a situation where an officer is in a decertification hearing, and that fate is decided by five of twenty-one members on that panel, which I think is unfortunate. But that's what we have with the legislation as of, as of today. Um, nine is a quorum, which is unusual. But, um, a- as far as the appeals, uh, process goes, uh, the first level of appeals to the, uh, Criminal Justice Training Center. Um, it's a little unclear about where that's going to occur. Um, whether that's gonna occur here, you know, locally, or if it's going to maybe occur in a remote setting, um, kind of like our meeting tonight. There's a possibility of that. Um, there's a, there's a time to appeal. The commission has, uh, a certain s- a set number of days, at least fifteen, to provide a statement of charges to the individual after the decertification hearing. And that individual likewise has a specific number of days to, uh, appeal that determination. Um, you know, obviously, if we're in a scenario where an officer, a particular officer, has been, uh, decertified, you know, they're, they're gonna wanna pursue their appellate rights. Uh, the second level appeal is going to be to Thurston County Superior Court. And the reason why that is so is because the, um, Administrative Procedure Act, uh, is, I, I'm, I'm trying to recall the exact RCW, and I'm, I'm, it's evading me right now, I apologize. But, uh, the APA does apply, uh, to these, these appeals. And so if the appeal, uh, to the CJTC, um, is not favorable, then the, the second level of appeal would be to, uh, Thurston County Superior Court. Again, within certain timeliness requirements.
Okay. Questions? Okay, next slide?
Yeah, and I wanted to put this up here because I think, you know, it's important to, to note that, um, you know, this has kind of changed, uh, to some level, um, you know, the relationship between employer and employee. Uh, you know, it, there's, there's, I think, in the, in the forefront of every law enforcement officer's mind in Washington State as of today is, you know, how do I maintain my certification, right? Not necessarily, how do I maintain departmental cohesion? How do I make sure that my sergeant is happy? I think a paramount concern- I think a paramount concern rightfully so for law enforcement officers in Washington State now is. How do I maintain my certification, so, you know, we don't wanna ignore that reality, obviously we wanna respect, um. You know, that that concern, and, you know, really, we wanna make sure that those officers have the tools that they need, which is. Part of what I've been trying to do uh over the, you know, past couple of months and. In training and some of the efforts that we've had at the police department, make sure that everybody's well aware of what's required of them now, um. But, you know, we need to obviously support our law enforcement through these changes because they've been significant, um. You know, a lot of law enforcement is is not particularly thrilled about the changes, but. It's it's a challenge that um they're willing to meet and to face, uh, you know, the individuals who who decide to to put on the uniform and wear the badge. You know, accept that challenge, um, and so I think we need to really kind of support that transition. And make sure we offer the tools that they need to make sure they succeed, um, and we don't need, we don't want to ignore the reality. Uh, and the importance of of this legislation when it weighs on uh each individual officer. Um, and we wanna maintain that and and be aware of that, um, that has kind of changed on a fundamental level. You know, how uh that officer may uh interact with uh supervisors, how the officer may interact with others. Um, and and what may be placed as a paramount concern for that officer where in the past. Um, you know, there's other other things that may have been put at the top of that list, um. For instance, departmental cohesion, right, um, and that's why I I have the the phrase up there, officers as an island under themselves. Because uh when the rubber hits the road, um, if an officer's conduct is alleged to have run afoul of one of these statutes. It's that officer who is going to have to um answer to the commission and is going to have to defend against that claim. Um, which raises another interesting question about, you know, who, who is going to provide the defense for that officer, right? Is that gonna be the city attorney's office, is that gonna be outside council, right, these are all things that as of today, we we don't have clear answers on. Um, I think it's probably safe to say that, uh, you know, in the event that. The officer's actions, if they are in that type of a proceeding, are actions that, you know, our own investigation has determined are consistent with our policy. Then, you know, my thinking is that really what we're defending isn't necessarily that officer in individual capacity, but we're defending. The city of Pasco, the policy for the city PD, and under the entity model, um. You know, that would make sense that we'd be able to do that, but if we have a situation where that officer's conduct is inconsistent. Um, you know, we could have a scenario where an officer is having to go out, um, and fit their own bill to to make sure they get adequate defense in one of these hearings.
Thank you. So, thank you, Mr. Briggs, I I I think the uh, the the serious part here is for. Police officers holding a license to provide um public safety in the state of Washington. Could certainly be in jeopardy by, if if you went by his uh um numbers, um. People, uh, uh, the the hearing board could have no law enforcement experts actually on the board, polling and making decisions. Um, about that certification of the officer, you know, I I'm not sure how often that's gonna happen, or if it's gonna happen. But just to have that out there, I'm sure is not um settling for our officers, and so we're doing everything we can behind the scenes. To make sure we give them the best training, the best equipment, um, to ensure that if that does happen, we can. Provide for them um good documentation that um even to not to to laymen, people that are not. Law enforcement professionals, uh, uh, that these, that our officers are professional in their training, their conduct. And that we will hold our officers accountable, and we can show this panel that, so tha- that is a little disheartening for officers. Um, to to be, to have their 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 license to work, um, judged by people that have n- no experience. In in the profession, so with that, I'd love to take any questions, um, for for either me or or Mr. Briggs.
All right, I appreciate that very much, any questions or comments from council?
Mr. Councilman Maloney?
Yes, Mr. Maloney.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Martinez, and and thank you, chief, and thank you, council for for your um bringing this forward, I know we've all been waiting for this. Um, hearing plenty of rumors, um, certainly, I think, I think there's a lot of concerns, I'm, I am especially concerned about the decertification process there. Um, while I'm positive there is best of intentions, best of intentions and actual support for officers are not the same thing. So, um, I know we're right now, we, there isn't a big ability for us to push back. But I do know we're coming for the legislative agenda soon, um, and I would, I would very much like to see. What on our agenda, um, our our strong list of things that this council can can help. Um, move, make sure that some of these, some of these very legitimate concerns are are addressed as we, you know, go through that process. I did have a question about the decertification panel, um, it sounded like there's a lot of uncertainty about who would be on it or or such. My understanding was this law was in effect right now, is the decertification panel not seated yet?
They're yet to be appointed by the governor.
S- so, when when is that supposed to take take place, do we have an any idea on that?
I'm not certain, I know that the commission has until, I believe it's July of twenty twenty-two to promulgate rules. Um, as far as the appointment process, uh, uh, it's not clear in the legislation. Um, obviously, that panel needs to be appointed quickly in the event that there's ever a uh uh decertification hearing that that uh er- arose. Wouldn't be able to hear it.
Thank you, I I guess when I, when I'm looking through this, um, if we're talking about decertification as being specific for our, you know, commissioned police officers. It seems like there's certain things that um that we may be able to do and hopefully can do to protect our officers. Certain duties that we can um make sure that they're not performing, that our our commissioned officers maybe aren't performing as as much of a loss as it is. Uh, for example, the 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 PD Facebook page, right, um, there could be certainly instances where someone could bring that forward as. As evidence, one of our officers is, you know, may have said something that may have meant one thing, but some could be used against him, there's. It's, I think the ramifications of some of this and how poorly defined it is 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 unfortunate, and I hope that this next year, like I said, we can take a very strong position on. On what areas need to be cleaned up and make sure that we're 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 strong advocates for what what needs to be fixed going forward. Um, and otherwise, I guess we're we're in it, um, and I I hope our officers know that we're, um, you know, this isn't our rules. Um, and we're we're, we'll be as supportive as we can, I I certainly will be, so. Uh, whatever we can do good to help change things going forward, um, for the better and and the areas that need to be cleaned up and clarified, I'd. Be strongly encouraging uh staff to bring forward, guess that's all I have to say, thank you, no real questions, just a, just a voice of support.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney, anyone else?
Mayor, I, if I could, mayor, I I did wanna note that um, there are impacts to the fire department, our fire service as well. And uh, we didn't go into a lot of those tonight, but uh, because of how the police, law enforcement now has to respond to some of these incidents. It puts uh our firefighters in a little bit different position than they've been before, so. For instance, there's a kind of a duty to clear the scene that we heard about tonight for a law enforcement officer, I I don't know if it's, you know, cuz the. Uniform and the badge can cause behavior, uh, what have you, but uh. But firefighters then are kind of left by themselves, we had a recent incident that I shared with you where. Uh, police officer had had uh made contact with someone based on a nine-one-one call on an overpass. The uh, the uh person uh did not want anything to do with the police officer. And following what he needed to follow, he he kind of left, he cleared and kind of moved away. Uh, fire was right behind him, there was an aid unit behind him. Uh, we had a couple paramedics get out, tried to assist this lady, she assaulted one of them, and then the police were able to come back in to the scene. And she wound up being arrested, and uh, I'm assuming she got the help she got after that, but uh, those are some of the. Things that are, I I unintended consequences of some of this legislation, I think that we're probably gonna see more and more of that, and so. You know, besides the amount of training, and and I think the department, uh, police department has done a excellent job of being in front of this, city legal. Uh, our our uh, city prosecutor, uh, have all really worked together to try to get the officers to understand the impacts of these new laws. Uh, we also need to be working with fire and and will be in, um. Some of their uh approaches and uh and procedures to better protect them, uh. In the case of this one, you know, none of us were there, have yet to been able to really get in and and kind of untangle uh what happened here, but uh. Off the cuff, it just seems like we need to really be more careful about, and and it's unfortunate because it's a profession that wants to go to people. Put their hands on them, try to help heal them, and uh and make them make them safe and comfortable and and uh and uh help them. And uh, they're gonna have to learn to be probably a little more standoffish than they were before to just to protect themselves until they. Get more into the situation, can assess some of those signs, and uh, it's unfortunate to be thinking about defensive tactics. For paramedics.
Right.
But that's kind of part of what we're looking at, to be honest with you.
Thank you. City manager day table, any anybody else, um, so I know we have a lot of challenges. Uh, it'll be interesting to see what the st- the stats look like, and. Um, I hope that everyone watching, the community understands the gravity of of the situation for our police officers and firefighters. Uh, so we'll uh, we'll see how it plays out and uh do the best we can for now. So, thank you for that. All right, next we'll go to, next on our agenda, and then we're gonna talk about. Uh, or uh introduction of an ordinance for wheeled all-terrain vehicles, and again, Chief Roski.
Uh, thank you, mayor, council members, and the public, um, uh, might be tuned in here. This this came to us um via citizens' concern of a state statute which allows. All-wheeled vehicles with certain specifications and and uh appropriate legal markings on them. To be operated on a roadway in the city of Pasco thirty-five miles an hour and under o- other provisions of that. Um, people, the the, so- some members in the public were confused because there's an RCW that allows. Allows for them to be operated, but there's uh some fine print in the RCW that says. The local jurisdiction has to first adopt this RCW, so our attempt to bringing this to you for discussion. Was simply to get clarification to the public, um, our name, wh- whenever possible, we can have um. Rules and ordinances and laws in the uh local area that that match each other. Our other jurisdictions have passed and are looking at passing or adopting this ordinance, so when possible, if we can uh mirror those. A- across the area, um, it makes it easier for the public to understand what's going on, and certainly from an enforcement standpoint. So, um, this is literally the RCW quoted back and put into our PMC, and um. I would, I would certainly stand for any questions that you might have on it.
Thank you, Chief Roski, uh, Councilmember Alvarado.
Yeah, just a quick question, do we, do we have any um, um, stats on uh what, if any infractions we have written? Uh, folks who have been uh breaking this in in our city for the past, in in the past?
I I don't, I'm sorry, I don't have any stats in front of me, um, I can tell you that most of our officers have been um. Educating the public because it is literally a confusion, now they'll get, they'll be at contact by the officer and the public knows these are legal. Um, here's the RCW, and the officer said, well, they are, but not here yet, so.
So, it has not, it's not been something we've been very aggressive about, it's just something that needs to be clarified?
Right, we're just trying to get clarification.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvarado, anybody else? I had a discussion with Chief Roski, um, and he uh aligned me a little bit, um. You know, it is good to be in the same uh place as our as our neighboring cities, uh, with this type of ordinance. Um, one of my concerns is, you know, worst-case scenario, there's a, a lot of these driving around a neighborhood making a lot of noise. Uh, but the reality is, is that they would be no different after the discussions that I've had. Um, with any other situations such as, you know, motorcycles or or even cars that have, that are real loud. Uh, they would fall under uh the same Washington Administrative Code to ensure that they're within a certain decibel, and um. And it would just be dependent on a case-by-case situation, I ca- is that correct, Chief Roski?
That's correct, I I believe it does, the WACO talks about uh modified exhaust systems, uh, from what the factory intent is of those. This would now be a motorized vehicle on the roadway, so much like a motorcycle, it would, it would fall into those same provisions.
Thank you, Chief Roski, all right, so is this something that's gonna be brought in the next meeting, or when will it be brought to council for approval?
I I think we wanted to introduce it tonight and uh get some feedback from council, we do have some citizens, uh. And and public, members of the public that have in, expressed some interest, so we wanna give them a little bit of notice and. Uh, give them the opportunity to provide council some input, and uh, pro- you'll probably see it at a, a regular meeting, I'm I'm thinking probably three weeks out. Rather than this next one, to give folks a little time to to know that it's coming and and an opportunity to come and uh interact with the council on it.
Thank you, City Manager Dave Zabel, yeah, I've I've had several people ask me about this, and so I'm glad it's it's been brought up and uh and getting some attention, so thank you very much. All right, if nothing else, we'll move along to the last item on the workshop meeting, and that is a resolution. Amendment number two to an interlocal agreement with the Port of Pasco for Argent Road project, Director Warley.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, can you hear me all right?
Yes, sir, I can hear you.
Great, uh, this evening, we've got an item before you related to an amendment to an interlocal agreement with the Port of Pasco. Related to the Argent Road project, and given that our CIP manager Maria Sarah is most familiar with it. I would like to turn it over to her to give you a briefing on it, Maria?
Thank you, good evening, Maria.
Good evening, mayor and council, so we bring to you today the second amendment to the interlocal agreement with the Port of Pasco. For the Argent Road project, so the original interlocal agreement established. The conditions and the responsibilities of each party, so the city and the port related to this project and the payment. So it was contributions and timelines for the project, now the project has been. Uh, divided into three phases to address the most immediate needs uh near the intersection of Road uh. Twenty, Twentieth Avenue, sorry, all that, um, and then there are two other phases that will continue to be developed. Right now, they're under design and will be under construction in the following two years, so with that. Um, the first amendment to this ILA was created so that the port could. Provide to the city their contribution in funding in a one single payment instead of the originally established schedule. Which included several payments throughout several years, and now we bring to you a proposed amendment number two, which really extends the timeline. For the completion of the project, and is for the agreement to be valid throughout. The completion of all three phases of the project, the port is, has shown uh support for this. Extension, and so we're bringing it to you for um approval.
Thank you, Maria, and we can appreciate that, um, there's already been a lot of improvements there, but they're looking forward to. Did, did you say this was gonna be the completion of phase two, or?
All three phases, so the extension of the ILA covers the completion of all three phases, instead of just um moving through. Phase one, which now we know we just awarded it, so now it would be needed anyways to be extended until the end of this year.
Oh, perfect, thank you, any questions or comments by council?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, just one comment, the extension takes it to the end of the twenty twenty-four. Which should take us to the end of all three phases.
Okay.
Is Councilmember Maloney?
Yes, Mr. Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor Martinez, and thank you for the 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 presentation, uh, we'd had a conversation recently about some of the phase one aspects and awarding that bid. Um, and part of it was talking about design standards and what agreements, I didn't see anything in this interlocal agreement that spells out any of that uh conversation. Is that located elsewhere, is that to be determined uh for phase two and phase three? Um, I guess what's what's interested to me is is understanding, um, how have they planned approaching the portion of um Argent Road in. Phases two and three that are immediately adjacent to the uh freeway. Um, understanding that on the other side of that fence, um, is not something that we have this, the option, I'm understanding, is to affect, so. Understanding what that looks like and how it's gonna play out, I was kind of curious, I have no, no issues with the current um proposal to extend the ILA, obviously that makes lots of sense. We get our feet under us, but I would want to understand that process better.
Um, and my understanding is that the design standards uh that the city has for road construction, road design. Are gonna be followed, so there aren't anything special um related to the actual improvements for each of those. They're gonna be developed as we work our way through each of the phases, so for example, phase two is under design right now. Uh, phase three, I think we have the consultant on board, and they are gonna get started on it. Uh, and so we will be reaching out to the community and. Uh, and so we will be reaching out to the community and to council members about what that road section's going to look like. Typically, it'll have multiple lanes and, uh, bicycle lanes and sidewalks on both sides, provided that there's sufficient right-of-way to do that. So, um, are you thinking of something specific about the design of the roadway that you're interested in?
Oh, we can, we can take that offline. I just was trying to understand if this interlocal agreement, um, created a set of standards, and it sounds like it doesn't, it's within the city's design control, um, to prudently use the funds and such, and that's what I want to make sure that I understood. And we'd had some conversation in phase one, uh, with some of the Abita words, you may recall, um, where we're discussing, you know, items like, um, whether the, you know, landscaping and such like that. And so, uh, there was a suggestion at that meeting that the ILA might have been a mechanism for spelling that out. It sounds like it's, it's not. That's fine. I don't want to take any more time to this meeting to discuss further. I just want to make sure I understood whether, what, whether that's located and was a contractual agreement. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney. So, if there's no further questions or comments, then we'll look forward to having it in our next meeting for approval.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Warley, and thank you, Maria. So next we go to miscellaneous council discussions. Uh, City Manager Dave Zabel, do you have anything for us tonight?
No, no items tonight. I would, just one quick thing. I'll mention that, uh, we had a thousand tests at the CBC site today. So that, that site just continues to get phenomenal numbers, not in a good way. But, uh, these people are out getting tested. We're, we're looking at, I know the chief's looking at it. I had an opportunity to have a conversation with, uh, City Manager Mosley over at Kennewick about the possibility of trying to get that site open a couple more days a week, or perhaps another site while we're going through this peak right now. Right now, it's open five days a week.
And I, I don't know if, uh, Chief Gere was still on the line or not, but, um, my understanding is that, uh, the peak is really not expected to be reached for another three or four weeks. Does that sound?
Yeah, that, that's our understanding. Uh, chief's been part of those discussions, but that's, that's what the Health Department's indicating to us. We're, we're into this for a little while, maybe a little longer than that even.
Yep, and the statistic that kept, uh, just going in my mind is now is that, um, uh, of the majority, I believe it was up to ninety-six percent of those that are hospitalized were the unvaccinated. Anyway, I, I just, that, that's a, that's a big number for me. I would encourage those, specifically with underlying health issues, or, uh, or those who work with others, to, to encourage them to, to perhaps think about it, get more educated on it. There's a lot of, uh, information out there now for, uh, for that type, uh, of information, so I would encourage that, uh, very much. Um, I know that in our work sites, there's a lot of, um, work going on to determine, you know, the, uh, the safety, the safety aspect of, of this uh, Delta go, uh, spreading. So, uh, I would just encourage the community to, to keep vigilant and be safe and, um, just, just work hard to, uh, to try to, to get on the better side of this. Anybody else for miscellaneous discussion?
Mayor Martinez, this is, uh, Councilmember Maloney.
Yes, Councilmember Maloney.
Yeah, on that same topic, um, I, since we've stopped the, um, emergency management, um, team, I guess, has disbanded, um, a- after we were able to come down for a while there. Is, is there any word about what the state and the region are doing as, as our cases are unfortunately increasing rather dramatically? And the hospitalizations and the hospital capacity is, is becoming a, a real issue? I, I'd like to understand what the states, what the state's doing in terms of, uh, pop-up clinic vaccination sites, staffing of our facility, of the, of testing sites, et cetera. I mean, obviously, we, we're at, to a spot where it seems like a rigorous response is necessary. And I'm not sure I'm hearing a lot out of the state. I, I need to, I would like to understand better, um, what that's looking like and what we're seeing.
Well, I, I will give it a, a crack, Councilmember Maloney, and then, uh, if one of the chiefs or Chief Gere online wants to jump in, please feel free to do that. But, um, so we did have a conversation just last week with, um, you know, the Health District, a pretty lengthy one. Matter of fact, two. And, uh, the i- the idea of pop-up, uh, vaccination clinics came up. Uh, their experience with those was not very good, uh, not a lot of numbers for a lot of effort. And so they've really been putting their effort into trying to, trying to prop up and, uh, work with the private providers, which I think numbers-wise is going okay. It's getting people in those doors is what the issue is. And, uh, when we last talked to them, I think on Thursday or Wednesday, I think it was Wednesday, uh, they were going to be working on, and we offered, of course, the city's help, but, uh, working on a campaign, uh, for outreach for those populations, uh, that were having difficulty, uh, boosting the percentages up for vaccinations. Uh, have not heard much personally, uh, from the state over the last month or so. And, uh, I think that pretty much goes through what I am aware of, uh, at least most recently. And Ed, or Pat?
No, that's about where it's at right now, is how City Manager explained it. Nothing new.
All right.
Mr. Zabel?
Oh, Chief Gere.
I guess when we talk about vaccinations, uh, and the current Delta virus and its spread rate, we better remember that, uh, Johnson Johnson, I believe, is twenty-one, Pfizer's twenty-one, four years back, and uh, Moderna is twentieth, uh, eight before your second vaccine, and then you're at least three weeks after that. So when we say that we really haven't peaked out, that, that's really the issue. If we, even if we suddenly had a massive, uh, change of heart of, uh, the people that are anti-vaccine, um, we still have a long road ahead of us. And the health situation, the hospital situation is particularly critical, uh, with the number of virions that are going on, on a regular basis. Because the hospitals are, are getting pretty full. They, they really are getting full.
Okay, well, thank you for that. Did that help a little bit, Councilmember Maloney?
Well, I don't, I don't think it helps, but I appreciate, I understand that, that, that our, our, our staff is working really hard. I guess I would just say that if there's anything that we as a council body can do to help apply pressure to make sure the right resources are in the right places, um, I know I'm, I'm, I'd be happy to, to do anything I can. I know there's not much I can do. I feel pretty helpless right now. Um, but if there's anything, Chief, or, um, either Chief or the, uh, City Manager that, that, that I can do, please, um, let us know. Um, if it's a matter of resources, if it's a matter of, of, of whatever, whatever it is that we might be able to factor that, at the, at the policy level, um, the budget allocation level, I'd certainly be open to understanding how we can get through this and hoping so to save some lives.
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember Maloney. Again, I, I feel somewhat helpless as well. Uh, but I, I, I guess just, uh, uh, the most we can do at this point is just to encourage, uh, safe practices to, to try to prevent the spread. That's, that's what we can do more than anything right now, I think. Anybody else? I thought I heard somebody wanting to come up. If not, City Manager Dave Zabel, do we have a need for an executive session tonight?
Not this evening.
Okay, so with that, I appreciate everybody coming and, um, and joining our meeting tonight. It is eight fifty-eight, and this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.
Good night, everyone.